All right, I'm going to call the meeting to the order. Uh, April ninth at seven oh one P M, the Village Council regular meeting. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the very common and for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, could you call the roll, please?
Lori Borjo, Ansa, Kelsey Cook.
Here.
Maureen Helma.
Yes.
Alison Kemp.
Yes.
Jacob Nikosia.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
If there are no changes, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda presented.
The amended agenda?
Yes, the amended.
Well, support it. Motion by Council, second by Council, the second one that was sent out in front of us. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any motion carries? This is number five, uh, this is placeholder for public hearings, but there are none this evening. Number six is call to the public. Anyone would like to address council, please feel free to step up to the podium at this time. Seeing no one moving, we'll move to the consent agenda, page seven.
There's no changes, I'll make a motion to approve, consensus to that, item seven A and B, that's presented. I'm sorry, do we see the file? Support?
You said seven A and B, you mean seven A and one and two, or seven A and B, and then you can approve?
I can barely read, let me try. I'll make a motion to approve consensus that items A and B, including the bills, number one hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Support?
Great, thank you.
I have the numbers right?
Yep. Seconded by Nikosia. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Borjo is absent, Helma?
Yes.
Nikosia?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to eight, unfinished old business, the beauty project update.
So I had a note in there, and I have new notes since then, Mr. Wethel did come in after he returned from Florida, gave us a check, we mailed out the agreement to D T. I reached out to D T, they received the check on April fifth and the agreement, and he said we'd expect forty-five days or so before he'd have any construction scheduled. That's for the light installation I'm talking about with the beauty. So that until, you know, middle of May, fourth, end of May, maybe, I don't, he didn't say that, I doubt that's where it's going to be scheduled, if they were to have an construction schedule, who knows when that actually will be?
Thank you. Any questions from council or that?
So that's just for my name for the parking lot?
Yep, the lights are purchased in his building, D T's going to do the installation when they can schedule. But they have received all the payment and the contract.
Thank you.
There's nothing further, we'll move on to the H B, the budget discussion.
Okay, not a whole lot to add, other than, you know, we got a good, um, talk that night, um, I left it with the budget surplus in there, we discussed potential use of that is, uh, maybe some, uh, pavement and actuarial subdivision, because we talked about how we're being forced through our water lines to go to town, and it's not fair to get us out of town, because it will be at sea in fifteen years, and we've done with the water stuff, and we talked about it last year, too, we had a, uh, one price to go the main drag through there, and we talked about that a little bit. When we meet in the thirty, if we can nail that down, we don't have a price until, unless it's budgeted, I don't want to really log tax, some guys come on out and go through, we have last year's estimate. And we maybe add ten percent of that or something, at least give us an idea. We also talked, and it was in the budget, uh, we talked about East Wordage, uh, potentially using that as a major road, major streets, along with the county line that would match this fifty percent. So we do want to obviously put that in, so we don't lose that fifty percent match from the county board of commissioners. And, um, other than that, we have, uh, one thing we discussed, we didn't have nailed down at all yet, is our, um, equipment purchases, and Don Brandy was, um, in today, he and I are going to meet him tomorrow, they're casing for a week, next week, when we try to check that out, so when we come back in the thirtieth, we'll, he had A I S equipment out to look at our large old loader, and that was one of the options, to see what it might be worth. So we have some better options for you then. And I'll touch on the water through a race for the next budget, and further on that.
Thank you. Any questions with that, some councils?
Um, I think there was a, um, a vehicle for the pieces wrong.
Yes, yep, that was in the budget. I forgot what the name, like the day before got out, but I remember that.
Oh, yeah, well, that's only, like, oh, yeah, at least her.
They don't give those away.
Cheaper than a helicopter.
Any further comments? Okay, we'll move on to new business then, number nine, we just scheduled two public hearings. First one, the deliberate bills and violations to nail the twenty twenty-four tax rule for the Village Ordinance, three twenty-one, section seventy dash seventy-eight D. And then, perhaps we could do these together?
Well, what's the date for the first one?
Same.
May fourteenth?
So would that be the next regular meeting?
Okay, okay, sorry.
Just checking, yeah, that's good to check. Um, and then budget adoption to taxation, can those, I see those can both be done at the next regular meeting?
Yeah, and both of them may fourteen.
Both may fourteen, oh, got it. Okay, um, is there a motion to schedule those public hearings?
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the deliberate bills and violations, we put out the twenty twenty-four tax rule for the May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four regular council meeting.
And the budget adoptions?
And to schedule the budget adoption to the face near for the May fourteen, twenty twenty-four regular council meeting.
I knew you were going to say that, but I just wanted to help you.
Motion by Helma, seconded by Kemp. Any discussion on that from council or further? Okay, can that be done by roll call vote?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Yep, yes. Borjo is absent, Nikosia?
Yes.
Helma?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries, great. Um, next is the contract award for the Park Street water main replacement paving project.
Okay, we have a recommendation letter from Roland there, and a bid comp, uh, bid comparisons below, uh, on the bid tab, you'll see that it was, um, about three and a quarter percent higher than the engineer's estimate. We, we did add a little more restoration to it regarding, in regard to all the sewer work that we're going to do beforehand, we are going to try to restore, and then have them tear it all back up, so some of that will be charged out to the sewer account. Uh, but it was, uh, made it easy, because we had just done our due diligence and background and project, um, verification with Hutch Paving for a parking lot project, which was starting one day. So, the fact that they were always going to relieve the debt, flow it through, check their numbers, and then come up with a plan to award it to them. So that's the recommendations to work with, what Paving needs to do that amount.
Thank you. Just one second. Is that a not to exceed amount in the letter? Is that how you classify that, or that's just, that's just the, just the bid amount?
It won't be not to exceed, no. Yeah, that's a bit long, because if they end up in more, you know, if we haven't added things to it, you know, it could, hopefully it'd be a little less.
Right. Right, okay.
Is Hutch going to do the paving and the water main?
Yeah, no, it's, um, the excavator.
Which is not deep?
Hitchcock or something like that, ex, uh, no, he, he wouldn't be that, something like that, he can't do the same work.
But too big?
Yeah, yeah, he doesn't have the trucking and stuff like that, um, boy, hitch packs and, and the belt, I don't know if that's it.
So we're really disapproving the contract for the paving?
Yes.
Well, no, they're the general, they're doing, they're a subcontractor.
Oh, okay.
So, no, it's Hutch Paving, it's, it's contracted, do all the work, and they have that subcontractor as part of their work.
But the water main replacement subcontractor for Hutch?
They're, they're, yeah, yeah.
Standing there, right? Okay.
They may be dealing with some of that, some of the excavators, came over looking, like hitch packs and, if there's some.
You're awarding the contract to Hutch Paving?
Yeah, so that's a little more.
Hutch Paving has other people do the parts.
Yep.
Right, okay, because the letter says Hutch plans to complete all asphalt concrete, oh, themselves, okay, got it. We'll move to award the Park Street.
Oh, plastic, I'm sorry, I'm in a plastic.
Okay, okay. We'll move to award the Park Street water main and paving project to Hutch, um, Paving Incorporated, for the sum of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents, from its third bid.
Support?
Motion by Cook, seconded by Helma, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please?
Nikosia?
Yes.
Helma?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Borjo is absent, and Cook?
Yes. Motion carries. Next is the consideration of bids for the Park Street sanitary sewer lateral connection replacement.
And I have the bid tabs on there, and I have the, um, full bids here as well. So this is when we talked about briefing, talked a little bit more, but I think that, uh, but we, we were a little, little startled at some of the, the laterals, which apart from the main over to the end of the public park, where the building connection meets the private line, the asset and private line going into the home. And why about nineteen or twenty, though, we have some work. And we're quite happy with, we're with the Seradan, D W sons, some side work services, D W sons isn't really geared for this, because he doesn't have the large trucking, you know, designated, he used onset drills, replaced, he was going to, and for a lot more cost, all the way, so bringing sand in. So they weren't very competitive about this, as well as they do for us, on our water line service leads, this will, we'll come to find out how to do the house. But Seradan local company here, just east of town, um, we were, it came in about half, what we were thinking, we, we were thinking, based on the water line, service leads and stuff, and these are even deeper, and someone was going to wonder, near the road edge, and the paths, even a couple of units down right through the main. We, we were estimating about four thousand dollars per location, so the fact that we're well below that, we're looking at eighty-nine, nine thousand dollars, we were kind of guessing, so we were pretty happy with coming in around forty-one. We, we recommend that we award Seradan construction, this is going to be overseen by Don Brandy and Rudy, in our, they've done some of these themselves in the past, and they need one off here and there, so they're ready with that, we have a expected problem, with bedding, with pipe and materials and stuff as well.
What's a donut connection?
So when the plate comes, it has a hub on the end, and then they put, you know, when you connect that hub to a straight line pipe, you put it in there, and there's a gap, so the donut goes in, it's got, it's got fins on both sides, slide into the donut, and it's got some center piece with fins on it, so then it's kind of sliding there. This may be right at Fern Go and Davis, and I used to work there years ago, and made it myself. So, um, that's how they connect, and those are, after fifty years, they allow a lot of infiltration of.
Yeah.
So they have a two or one, a two or one connection, but they'll cut that hub off, so it's more of a straight pipe, straight pipe, different sizes, different materials, but still, the connection in the neck, actually now, it's steel band, it's over it, you know, can help it, um, sturdy as well as tighten down better to the rest of it.
So are we saying, so we have the sewer main in the road, and then the lateral comes off of the main?
To the property line.
To the property line.
To the railway line.
Okay, so you're saying, I guess, about in the Oxford Village ordinance, is that publicly owned? Because in most, all the communities I've seen?
Those are private.
They're private, from home all the way to the sewer.
Up to the railways, where I've always dealt with them, with the railway line.
We do, most other communities, too, the pipe, like the water main goes from the water main to the stop box, is public, and then the stop box is private, but the sewer is the whole way.
This is about the same location.
But we never, the sewer's always been the whole of us.
Right.
Yeah, that, I always thought.
They think you're right at the start, from the start box to the house.
Yes.
Right for water, but for sewer, we've always, my office, just from my own experience, my office does anything, the house to the main is private, which we can pay for private, but I'm just wondering if our, if the village considers that private, like, are we doing work on prior property? In the village ordinance?
It's underneath the road, and it's underneath the railway, so I agree with that, because that's in private, there isn't a public park, but that's how I've always dealt with them over the years, like, and like, we have something as a clog, where it's like, hey, if your clog is between the, uh, the donut connection or the sidewalk, getting the house, that's up to you, if you call somebody out, you do the repair, because from there out to the road, we will do the repair.
So our office handles it, especially?
All the way to the main.
All the way to the main, especially for P A two twenty-two, like, if there's a clog, there's tree roots right up to the main, but it's not coming in through the main?
We take care of it.
We do not, so only if.
So you take, you take it private all the way from the house to the main?
We do, in all the communities we operate.
Even underneath the railways?
Yep.
That's what the village has always done in the past.
That's why I'm wondering, what is it written in our code, we just need to acknowledge whether we're doing work on the private property here?
We will check.
Yeah, because the, the streets, actually, if it becomes village property, like, like a typical country road, you typically, you owned the middle road, right? Your neighbor owns the middle road, you own the middle road, and then there's an overlay of a common road portion, railway. And even though the person who owned the middle road, people always take the position that the railway line is the public domain, and that's where, kind of like water box stop, that's why we do the water box curb stop there, too, because from the curb stop end, that's technically village property.
We, we better, we better take a look at that.
Laura is saying that it's always, that, I agree with what I'm saying, that's why.
She agrees with Kelsey.
Yeah, she's agreeing with what you're saying.
Okay, that's why I'm just curious, because I just, it's fine, but I don't want to, like, so, example, all the trees that are in the railway, those aren't responsibility of the homeowner, you know, because they're in the railway?
If the tree's in the railway, and it's upsetting the sidewalk, or causing problems sidewalk, we are responsible for that tree, we get that tree down at our cost.
Okay.
And any damage caused by that tree.
Okay.
If, that's why we suggest, if we put one back in, put it behind the sidewalk.
Right.
That way, your tree, we're out of that at that point, if it's our tree in the sidewalk, if, if we go out and look at it, it's even sidewalk, and it's on the backside, because the railway can start from the back.
Do we need to act on this?
We are, there's some time constraints, because we want to get this work done by, uh, the road project is not supposed to start until the fourth of July.
So we get to approve this?
We're given, we're hoping to get done main in June, as a window to do it.
So we get to approve this, but subject to us checking?
Or we could put it on our budget meeting agenda?
Or we could do that, right?
Yeah, I would want to go to the next month, because they have to schedule, they have to know.
I feel comfortable, more comfortable if we look.
Just whatever the, yeah, I just don't want to, yeah, just because I want to know, and I'm trying to articulate it as before, Joe, I'm sorry, I'm just bringing it in now.
Well, I do, yeah. I, I've always dealt with, like, out in, um, the railway line is where the public lateral begins, there's a lateral, and then there's a leak.
Right, let's take a look at what are.
Yeah, and Don, we've done, and we've always dealt with that side of here in the village, too, he said, yes, if it's the sidewalk in the house, that's the homeowner's responsibility.
I know I don't have a sidewalk, but I repaired my sewer, and I paid for it, not the village.
But, yeah, because it's, it's, it's hard to tell with, you know, unless we're doing camera down in there, you don't always look exactly where it is, sometimes, they'll come out in camera, and they have a meter, they'll measure how far away they are from the, clean out the basement, and they can come out, it's around twenty feet out, you can twenty meters, say, well, that, that clog is right here, and that's four feet from the sidewalk, that's on yours. A lot of things to do, they blow it down, main, they'll check the main. But repairs, we've always done from the sidewalk into the street, it's under our road, and we would take that.
If we, if we table this at the budget meeting, we would be okay?
That's two weeks, or what is that, two weeks from yesterday, or three weeks from yesterday, three weeks from yesterday?
You might just want to call that in?
He, he and I talked about this, we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I thought we were good on this, but I, and now that you're raising it, I want to make sure.
I've just never seen it.
I've never seen it done that way.
Okay, yeah, and I just, I don't want to open up the door to, you know, now we're getting a call every time.
We're on private property, and what are you?
Right.
Because if you pull up the properties, uh, you, you don't own in the middle road, though, when the railway line comes, you own to the sidewalk, you know.
You can take action, subject to us confirming.
Yeah.
You don't let the edge of the road.
Subject to an ordinance analysis.
Right, yeah, I just want to make sure, because I've seen most, like, sewer use ordinances will say, they'll define the water is on by this, the sewer is on, yeah, so I was just curious as far as.
Why don't, why don't we take action on it, and then, and if we're right, we're right, if we're wrong, then we'll bring it back for the budget again.
So here's the other side of that coin, the work has to go.
You have to do the sewers?
Some of them are really, really clogged up.
Yeah.
And it's in that section from that joint connection where the railway line is, out.
I mean, yeah, it makes most sense, you're already going to be digging there.
We don't want to be, we don't want to come back and have to dig out and repair this thing, you know, a year after this new road goes in, and sidewalks around.
Yeah, hundred, hundred percent, and I'm not opposed to someone getting great service from the village, even though not everybody does, but at least this problem has to be.
Yeah, always be careful about that precedent.
Right, that's why.
So we can take action on this, and then if Joe and I determine that we're, we need to relook at it, we'll bring it to the budget, bring it back.
And when you mentioned about you want to make sure we're doing private property, my, my belief was that, yes, we, we own, we own that line over the hub. So that was, I thought, no, we're not doing private, we're, we're starting here, going backwards, the laterals, because I've always seen them, that's part of it, but again, I didn't go back and review your ordinance, but that's specifically, I didn't, type of what you were saying about your belief that it's private, it's all the way to the main, I've never.
And it could be this hood thing, you know, that's why I'm like, I had a general idea of what it is, but maybe the infrastructure looks different, and you can tell where the separation is.
The sewer main and the lateral will install at the village, right, the mains, raw material, raw clay, the hubs coming over, the laterals are all clay, when they end, it's like, okay, that's a homeowner, you come up, and you tighten up our lateral.
So even now, the day you would put in?
Yes.
You would, if there's already sewer around in front of someone's house, but they haven't hooked up to it, you'd come out and dig up part of it, put in?
Usually their beliefs are, you could take, just like in my, if in my house, there's a sewer line out front, but I wasn't tied in, but it doesn't pour any water, there was a stub already put in.
Oh, interesting.
To the railway line.
Right, so, I mean, at the end of the day, it's just the point of D mark for?
Yeah.
Where you want to begin, where you want to end, where that is.
Our, our ordinance should be semi clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, so again, our, our plan, well, you know, so the leak, or.
Yeah, yeah, my only concern is just, yeah, obviously, for main private property and liability purposes, so now all of a sudden, we're going to claim we're responsible for this, and there's crap clogged in there, and backs up someone's basement, then the village is now responsible for all of this, before, whereas before, we could say, nope, it's in the lateral, it was your tree roots, it was your?
It is so funny.
Flushable wipes.
Because Don was my officer, they were talking all stuff, he's like, you know, I'm, I'm leaving tomorrow for a week, he said, I was going to be back, I said, yeah, I don't see anything on the agenda, you need to be there tonight.
They're original, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I literally recall him, he'd be in ten minutes, he could take this up in ten minutes, but, I mean, because he would know the, how we've always dealt with.
What is?
I think he was just calling, and he now would like, I'm in.
Why don't we take action on it, as if we're right, and bring it back in from the moment.
I'll give it a go. This is going to be a great, I can't read any of these numbers. I'm taking a motion to award the contract. Well, I think that part is. To Seradan Construction. Did I say it right?
Yep, Seradan.
In the amount of forty, in an amount not to exceed forty-one hun, forty-one thousand dollars for the replacement of the sewer lateral from the donut connection to the road edge. Assuming the village is correct, as to the responsibility of the sewer lateral to the donut connection. As per that end. Is it board? He said with confidence?
Motion by Helma, very well done, and seconded by Nikosia, any discussion?
Um, I guess with the, uh, the bids coming in under, is that going to allow us to do any extra anywhere?
Uh, no, we're, we're, we're pretty much sticking to the window of a Park Street paving, watering project, and that, that's really what was driving it, we don't want to come back here later, tear up the road, make sure these are all clean, ready to go, and again, we were pretty pleased, because, you know, we were thinking, oh, this will be like one hundred grand, and it was like forty-one, okay. Um, and they can, but literally, they're half month in town, it's their office, they worked it down, those guys, a lot, good contractors, um, good price, we're going to be able to hit our window.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please?
Helma?
Yes.
Nikosia?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
And Borjo is absent.
Thank you, motion carries. Next, more on water stuff, modern sewer rates.
Yeah, so I was talking to Kelsey's office last week. And not her, but some of her counterparts, the place was, uh, system, the county might system, operations and maintenance, uh, improvements, things like that, and millions and millions of dollars, because it's a huge system, and, um, we were looking at it, a good estimate would be like six and a quarter percent increase on sewer rate alone over the next five, each year for the next five years. As, that's where more of the ongoing stuff, then there's some, an actual, another bond, we should be expecting sometime in June, for an option to prepay, don't know the amount, and they had very close, they had fourteen million dollar bond, and roughly that, I was thinking it might be around one hundred and fifty-one, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, if we want to prepay it. We'll have to look and see what that looks like, see what the interest rate is, see what the interest savings are, see if we want to do that. But whether we prepaid that or not, we've already prepaid two, I think, in the last three years, uh, from the county, and so we rolled down our sewer fund a little bit, we were already thinking, we should probably start building that up a little bit, we're spending forty thousand here, in a couple of years, we do another road project, we might spend, you know, another twenty thousand or something on sewer repairs perhaps. And then this, you know, at least six and a quarter percent increase from the county, for those costs, come at us regardless. So we're going to have to look at raising the sewer rate, we have raised it in my six and a half years here. We, we've done pretty good with interest earnings the last year or so, that's how, um, we'd probably be forty thousand, unless you're, or more, more than that, probably. And so at our next budget workshop, I'll raise some options, you know, we have the, the flat fee, the regular sewer fee, sometimes called, and then you have your new teaching fee. And then there's different rates based on the sewer or the water meter into the homes, like, you have residential home, one hundred meters costing like eighteen, ten a month, or something, just had the water service, and I think, I, well, I know the county rate is like thirty-nine or forty-one.
Are you talking for water or sewer?
Sewer, but it's based on the water meter size, that's a great, they have tiered rates based on your water meter size, so we can look at changing the flat rate amount, so everybody's, then has modest increase. That way you know it's just there pretty much, too. Same thing, though, for, I was going to have the same conversation on, about our water rates, we, you know, we were spending, it's going to be four hundred and some thousand dollars, or about five hundred thousand dollars on a park street, for the water work, in facing the road over top of water. We've paid out a couple of bonds in the last three years, I think I sent out a bond, two or a email, several of you guys about the bonds, and we still have one more that's set about July of twenty twenty-eight, it's about four years old. Another good size, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, that'll fall off. But we should probably bump up the water rate a little bit, too, to keep ahead of the game. Next couple of years, like twenty twenty-six, five, at least, we have to have our water tower painted and, and cleaned on the inside, um, have at least checked and probably painted on the outside. So we would have to look at if some water rate decreases as well for those things. If it wasn't for all the letting copper rules, stuff that we were being forced to do, we wouldn't be looking at it, you know, as a balance, we're not going to free that money, but we're now spending it in large chunks, and we're going to continue to do this, like, every other year, for the next, you know, ten, twelve years as well. And then eventually, you know, maybe we'll ease off on those, as that work gets completed.
The E P A's enroll, it's going to be done in ten years, is that right, so, uh, yeah, I mean, there's.
How many communities do you think, like, large communities in the country are going to have that done?
Not a lot.
I think it's impossible.
I don't know if contractors are paying for?
It's like emission standards, Joe, it's just a goal.
Yes, so we're, we're doing fairly good on our service leads, and we're, we're going to close out a lot.
County communities are doing pretty well, actually, in terms of finding out chunks per year, you guys are doing pretty well, overall. But in terms of ten year compliance, going to be very tough.
Yeah, there would be many that don't keep that in by far.
And it'll get expensive.
But as far as increases to the water and sewer rates, like, I've definitely noticed that we haven't had any, and most communities have them every year, and those who don't are in trouble right now, or not one of those.
Because we had the dual pleasure, the pleasure of those bonds falling off, they're like two hundred and some thousand dollars a year, but together.
Some communities are just afraid to raise the rates, and they're paying a penalty.
So before we get further down the road, we were already thinking about, me and Don talked last year, this year, about, you know, bumping up like five bucks, ten bucks, whatever, here and there, so that money starts to get put back into the fund a little bit.
I'd rather do something small now, than have to do something huge later.
Yep.
Yeah, that's so important, we've had a couple instances where the communities, yeah, were hesitant to raise rates a little, so they got kind of hard, and some community members are calling our office, like, why didn't you just increase that, like, a percentage every year, why didn't you put us at like ten percent at once, you know, so it definitely makes a huge difference, and we see it way better, so I agree.
Agreed.
The more we can do, little by little.
And because we had a pretty, pretty decent fund balance, handles a couple of funds, we're coming up.
And cause we had a pretty, pretty decent fund balance, and those kind of funds are coming off, it's kinda like, wow, we will need to get, but.
Probably done.
Yeah.
Okay, so this will be further discussed at the budget workshop?
Yep.
Okay, any questions or feedback from council at this point? All right, we'll move on to item ten, or no, I had to move from the consent agenda, so we'll go to our second instance of public comment, so anyone who'd like to speak? Seeing no one. Move. We'll go to committee report.
Was that banned out?
Uh, okay, um, Noda, I believe that's councilperson Borsho, when she's absent, maybe one of the tons of that.
Not the last one, I went before when she, I went before.
Oh, okay. Um, planning commission and cable commission, huh?
The cable commission is not bad.
You weren't at bandit commission, we don't know where you were. We approved a, a sign, a couple weeks ago, we approved a sign.
Was I in the hospital?
I don't think so.
When was that?
Two weeks ago.
Did you play poker?
Those five was there at the time. And the action person performed.
The fact that I wasn't in the hospital, I would have put you up the aisle.
Uh, we, uh, a sign was approved at fifty-three south, uh, for a new, um, yoga place, yoga?
Oh, stretching place.
Yeah, your fuel is right now, it's on the south side of that, it's at the north side of that. I don't know, one of those three units, south side?
North.
Yes, there you go.
Um, physical therapy stretching.
Yes, that's.
There you go, there you go. Yoga wasn't included in that.
I mean, that's all great, you know, yoga studio.
So that's a fine question.
Thank you. Um, DDA, I'd love to refer to our executive board, thank you.
Bringing my magnets up here. Allison, I'll give you one too, I can do, so, um, yeah, so really busy with our budgeting, so you'll have our budget, um, we'll just give it to you for your next workshop. Uh, the work committee approved it today and made the recommendation, so we'll probably approve it at our board meeting on Monday, but it's ready to go. Um, not a huge change from last year, a lot of things the same, we're just putting additional money into capital improvements to match some ARPA funding from the county, which is really nice. Um, we have our entire summer series set, from cornholes to concerts, to line dancing, um, wine Wednesdays and everything in between, so, um, magnets are available at the village office, you guys have one today, Allison, I'll give that one to you, but it's, um, we got some really great sponsors and people who came alongside us this year, so we were able to do a little bit extra. Um, we're doing a lot to prepare for the national conference in May for Main Street, and we'll be presenting at the conference in Alabama. And then, gosh, not much else, I mean, it's, it's busy, it's crazy, but it's, it's good, but I think you guys are pretty much aware of everything else that's going on. Kelsey, did I miss anything from our last meeting?
I don't think so.
Oh, we are gonna interview, um, we received quite a few applications for the board member position, so, um, work committee to get out the three today, and they're gonna bring those people in for some interviews next week, so.
I'd like to see all of them when you get a chance.
Absolutely, I was actually gonna put them in your board packet for Monday, so that you guys could see everything, and then they have the three that they thought would be the best. For sure.
All right, I'll be answering, Joe?
Yeah, a few weeks ago, and, um, one thing that's been, it's, it's already started, it's not completed, if you've been over by the White Pine Coffee Osters in that, it was, um, there is a large rock place over there, and that was, uh, an effort by Jacob Schilling's model.
Justin Schilling. Justin Schilling.
I'm sorry. Justin Schilling's mom, um, there's also a plaque that's gonna be put up placed on that, and, um, and his dad's also been doing a fundraiser, probably in our office, so some food he's gathering, so. So, um, that was done, uh, a while back, the Roxton place, and she's been busy doing other things, and, and hopefully the plaque will be done, probably in the next month. Other than that, Linda's busy, she was moving her stuff out, uh, even more so today, um, in preparation for that, and then we get to that, she's found her locations to get to the parking lot project. But now there are two, while there still gets more and less stuff, they, for your time, that you can pass on available, so, moving along, let's go, Joe.
Great, do you, do you know when that crosswalk, uh, Frosta Boys, you did repaint it?
You painted?
Yes.
Well, they're not in service right now, so I don't know if we're gonna paint them, because they, um, they got.
Was it still crosswalk then?
It's a crosswalk, but the lights, the warning lights were, became, um, gefunk basically, they, you couldn't be parked with them anymore. They were working interment, which we, the Pauline Trail thought was not good, um, because sometime you'd use it and it would work, sometime it wouldn't, road commission installed it. Even though one side is in village property, it crossed the road, and then the road commission property, it's road commission to leave when they were installed, and it just got to where they were obsolete, couldn't be parked with them anymore. Those things are, you know, very expensive, we've had a couple folks come and, and offer to do fundraisers at the Pauline Trail, after telling you, could I talk about, they have a community about, maybe some of their, uh, maybe the ARPA funds, maybe for that as well. But nothing in the short term, so I doubt they're gonna maintain it, if they're painting, but, um, you might be talking about the strike, I'm sorry.
I'm talking about the strike. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So that part, I don't know what that, right, I see, cause I know.
We all speak in English.
Are you talking about the Rashid?
Well, it's the same crosswalk.
Yeah, yes, the crosswalk released on the.
The hot topic of a lady is the lights.
Yes, I was talking about paint.
Yes, white paint, right, actually. So, um, I'll have to see what Don did, those and that, I don't know, I think we did that last, when we did twenty nineteen, when we paved West Verde, we went down, we were, I think we refreshed it then, it could be last time.
Could we refresh it now, at least?
There's, there's several around, like, stop lines around town, too, that they'll try to get at, I don't know, he might have been having a.
Crosswalks.
Yes.
I think that's a more, it's a closer goal than.
Cause I'm not sure if the crosswalk, but it's got painted, if, you know, here, because of the time of the year, it was getting late in the year, and those can be scheduled for that as well. Our, our staff will, will put down that paint.
Isn't that what they were working on at the intersection of Plaza?
No, the, um, when they.
Is that a drain?
No, when they installed that, there was a manhole there, um, not collectors, a cover, and it kind of was part of the old curb, but they put a new one, and it kind of went around it. So that made it the greatest, or made it sharper radius there, so now trucks go over it all the time versus sometime, and so where it's meant into it, um, so, and they go over, it won't just be driving over, or trying to put grass there, just would be fruitless. So yeah, they're pouring, so that's one point. They're gonna do it two pours, because the one has kind of formed around the bottom of the.
Looks like a big hole, I didn't.
They backed it out, put some gravel into it, and there's a little, a board they're formed up, so they pour the bottom out, down to the drain first, the drain cover, it's not a drain, but manhole cover. And they're also gonna be pouring cement for the repair on the catch basin in the parking lot across the way there, that's, it's been in for a while, they did a repair in the catch basin and, and re-bricked it and everything, but, and they've got a saw cut, they had to wait for the weather to be nice, and then we're pouring concrete, so we'll be pouring the concrete on that, on that catch basin, you're getting funky, as well as that, both tomorrow.
Great.
Eight A M.
Is there something for the CBA that we know, that we know?
No, it's canceled.
No, okay.
No, that's good.
So G manager, wanna, anything else, Joe?
Um, yeah, um, I'm, I'm going on vacation tomorrow, I'll be back there. Um, I got an email, uh, last week or so, MDA has a category B funding, it's a competitive grant, it, it's not a lot of money, it's very competitive, it's hard to get, if we're gonna apply, it has to do with local streets, and only, we're in the category of the cities and villages of less than ten thousand population. I think there was like fourteen to eighteen grants last year, fourteen, I think initially, then they came with some other money and brought some additional ones out, but it's tough, it could be some more, but, in the first round, of all the ones, we wasn't even wanting to give them no account, they tried to spread it around geographically as well, so that might bode well for us this year. Um, and if you do it in, in regard, in relation to a, a, there's no project, you get better points, so if we were to look at this and say, hey, we wanna do a street next year, uh, with the water main, that would help our score, you know, but, there's no, we don't see the scoring, they just say, these are the things that help your score, and if you already receive it, then that doesn't score, if you already receive one, and this will be construction season of twenty twenty-five. So it's a June twelfth deadline, uh, I'll be bringing something back to May, it was like, we, we have to do some cost estimates and preliminary work to get that one pretty good, so I might have to, spend what I might have already did some data on the precedence, um, we would have to then maybe decide, if, we wouldn't necessarily have to decide which street per se, we would say, all right, Fred, Edison Street, or Davison Street, or something. Uh, the maximum's two hundred and fifty thousand that, that they would match, doesn't include any of their engineering, or preliminary work, that's something, construction work itself, but that means you're looking at what a five hundred thousand dollar project, which is about the park treat is. So, you know, that'd be helpful if we are lucky enough to get.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Oh, we had you post for our E P W project, or our personnel, um, we had a gentleman on last year, we thought was gonna still be available, come back and interview, well, a couple times, we're trying, kind of, had it, but they didn't connect, so it wasn't a good sign, so, I don't know, I think I posted it last Thursday. And on our website and on our social media, and then I'll get some of the cherry from the leader as well.
Great, yep.
And that's it.
Thanks, Joe, carry on. I don't have anything, all right, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, two things, which I really have, I think, but I just want, um, so, next week, in the, in the Michigan Supreme Court, there's gonna be, uh, oral arguments concerning contract rezoning and the, and the worry about the statute. And, uh, both the statute allows, and both the statute doesn't allow, I will be arguing that case, uh, next week, and then in the early part of May, the Supreme Court will, there are oral arguments on whether legislative bodies who form committees, and without decision-making authority, whether those committees have to comply with the opening example for the argument that case in May.
What's your position?
That's the weak side.
Cause I've always been, I always, well, I won't say my position.
So, so I can tell you on, uh, I, I am of the opinion that, um, the law is clear that if, if, if you, if you don't have decision-making authority, you're not necessarily, I don't know why we all agree, but I always recommend, we've always done that.
Yeah.
All committees and commissioners, we've done that, but the question is, what is the law's?
Right.
And they wanna get to the bottom, is Dana Nessel, um, filed on Amika's brief, supported my position, and she's gonna have a time to go.
Can you give me an example of what kind of committee you're talking about?
Well, so, so let's just.
Just that's a guy's.
No, let's just say, the perfect example is, is, you guys are very busy with, you know, village business, and, and we, we have a vacant parking, and, chair says, the president says, you know, what should we do with that park, and then, you say, well, we should make it into a playground, and then, then all of a sudden, you wanna do a little study of what should happen in the park, so you form a park committee. And the park committee just goes out and studies ideas for the park and brings back recommendations.
Less than a form.
No, less than a form, it never makes.
That's where it's going.
It never makes a decision, right? They just bring back a, but do they have to post and be minutes and do all the things for them, they require, have an agenda? I would say you should, cause I think the government needs to do that, um, but the question before the Supreme Court is, what does the law say? And the law really says, that, you know, if you're performing a legislative function, then you're subject, you're a public body, subject to the law, on the contract rezoning, the question's a little more, it, it involved, but it, it, it basically, centers on if somebody comes to you and wants to contract rezone for a use in a certain zoning category, does the use have a pre-existing category, or, yeah, conditional, or can they contract into it in the Supreme Court? I lost that matter at the trial court, I lost the court appeals, and then the Supreme Court said, we want here, so you know what that means, that means.
You're gonna lose again?
No, well, they don't, they won't take it if you're gonna lose again, right, normally, but we'll see, so, um, on that, on that one, the real property section, Amika and the Michigan Thompson Association submitted an Amika's brief. The, uh, M M L submitted an Amika's brief, yeah, all against us, but, you know. It should be interesting, um, this all has to do with, uh, with the situation up in, uh.
Love to appear.
And they feel, uh, um, anyways, two interesting things that could affect us.
Yeah, I think very relevant, and I'm actually happy to guess, I would like the decisions, you know, to have the clarity on.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll, and I'll get back to you guys at the May meeting, uh, because both of those oral arguments will have, and we won't have decisions, of course, but, but I can give you a few for where the court, I saw the court. It's always interesting to argue on a Michigan Supreme Court, it's, uh, rare to be able to, obviously, but it'll be interesting.
I, I have an attorney general opinion very clear, I thought, I know, I mean, that states that you have no decision-making authority, it's not immediate.
You are.
I, I kind of, that, you.
It, yeah, it, you know, it, it, it's one of those, it's, it's, it can be, I just believe in all meetings, you know, that they should know a lot, so you, nobody can say, I didn't know about that. And, um, one of the other things about, while I'm talking, is that I wanna remind you about that, and remind you, uh, boards, uh, when you, when you do your, uh, what's coming up now, uh, council comments, right? There's been some, some discussions that, you know, um, you raise something at council comment that you think is important, and then all of a sudden, there's a discussion among the council, whether or not that should have just been on the agenda, because the people at home didn't know that was gonna come up.
Yeah, I agree.
We're starting to get some, some blowback on these council privileges and commission privilege topics, where people raise an entirely new topic, and then there's a quorum, and then there's discussion on the topic. Public is saying, hey, I'm at home, if I had known you were gonna talk about the work being done on Smith Street, I would have come to the meeting, cause I got something to say. So we have to be careful, I'm just giving you heads up on your council comments, not dive too far into a topic and debate it as a quorum, without it being on your show.
Thank you, very interesting. All right, let's go for some council.
Not with that, I have nothing, I have nothing, I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Our Girl Scout cookies, okay?
I'll eat it for mine, so yes.
Right, get out there and support your, uh, local Girl Scouts, and then go out and buy some cookies, I, I think, uh, we, uh, they do a lot of good in the, in the, uh, in the community, and, and we just need to make sure that we're supporting them, so, I have two of them at home, and.
Do you have any in your trunk?
I may have some somewhere, I can, I can release them next week.
I'd like to say, this is the first year in my life I have not eaten a Girl Scout.
We have, we have to fix that.
Can't live without.
If you're not eating, it's all good.
Can't live without.
Tell me. No comment?
Got to come. Really, really, your comment, your comment should be to the public about events, and things that are happening, or things that are interesting, and feel free to raise a topic, and then just say, I don't wanna discuss it, I'm living in. Just don't lead it to a debate, don't, don't be chilled on my comment.
Almost adjourned, sub forty-nine?
Support.
A lot of people say hi.
Hi.